For the Planning Commission, can they raise their hand? Great. And do you promise to tell the truth as you know it to the Planning Commission?
I do.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Disposition of minutes. I'll sit way back here. Disposition of minutes. Any questions, additions? Okay, is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
I'll second.
Okay, and all in favor?
Hi.
Okay. Next, we have cases 15-01, Bill Walker, 6615, and 6621 Hudnall Road revision to the 0-97-98 lot split. Let's see, Mr. Walker, would you care to come up and just... Okay, go ahead.
The reason I didn't say that was the prior to the meeting. So let me go over this. This property was a lot split that was granted back in 1998 through the Planning Commission, and then it went to City Council. The ordinance is attached with it. It would have been ordinance 97-98, so what, 15, 17 years ago? At that time, it received four variances. One requiring the variance that it did not require a preliminary plat, variance from roadway design, a variance from requiring an improvement bond, and a variance from roadway improvement. So basically, this is a subdivision that they receive variances for, for the road coming into it to not meet city standards. At that time, there was a provision put into the variance as well by the Planning Commission that was not adopted by council, because it's not required to be adopted by council, that a stipulation that if any sale of the property occurs outside of the family or creation of additional lots, the road will be built and brought up to city standards. And then, Mr. Walker will talk to you a little bit about that here in a second. What they're wishing to do now is take, if you were to go to the survey in your packet, it's the, this page here. If you were to go to this page here, you'll see where Lot 1 wishes to add 2.808 acres to it, so it'll be held continuous and contiguous. Lot 2 wishes to add 4.044 acres to it. And then, as you can see, the private right, the private roadway remains the same at 2.944 acres. And still, these are residual of 69 acres on the property. So my recommendation, the way we want to read the ordinance, if so presented, the memo that I attached in there is kind of the way I think we want to look at this. And basically, it would be an amendment to ordinance 07, or whatever, 97-98, that it would be amended to now consist of 29.796 acres, where before it was 22.944, and divided into a 12.808 acre lot, which was formerly 10, a 14.044 acre lot, which was formerly 10 acres, and then there's still the 2.944 acres for the roadway. So a total of 29.796 acres. And then with the provision that the stipulation that the road, if the property is sold, then be recorded, that this has to be brought up to standards. And I know they want to speak to you about that. And Planning Commission is the one that can say yea or nay to this, to my knowledge, and then we'll go from there. But that's my recommendation. The lots, like I said, are going to be held continuous and contiguous, so it's not that big of a deal. But since an ordinance was granted on this, I felt it had to come back through the process because it's basically an amendment to an ordinance that was granted, much like we did that lot with that storage units on that property up in the plains a few months ago, if you remember that one, with the storage units in the back. It's for the same principle is why I brought this forth to Planning Commission again. So that being said, I'll turn it over to Mr. Walker, and he can go from there, unless you have any questions.
Mr. Walker, do you care to go up to the podium, please?
Thank you very much.
And does he need to re-identify himself here?
So I am, my name is Bill Walker, and I'm representing Mary Ann Michael, who is sitting to my left, and her husband, James Michael, before the proceedings, or the proceeding before this board. And I understand what Mr. Paskey has related to you with regards to our request. I do have, for whatever purposes or benefit this may do, may approach you. May I approach you one moment?
Sure.
I just have a plat, and I just made one. It kind of shows what we're talking about. And here, I think you already have it on your, the one there, but this is the subdivision. The first place that presently exists, according to your records. Thank you for letting me present those to you. If I can direct your attention, just as background briefly, to either the Bateman subdivision plat that I just presented to you, or the documentation that Mr. Paskey presented to you, which is a copy of the survey plat, of which we're requesting approval. My clients own the lot number one on the plat. Her sister, Shelley Booker, owns lot number two. Mary Ann Michael and her husband reside live at lot number one, as well as conducting a business there, which is their dog kennel, which has been there for some years. At the present time, both Mary Ann and her husband, James, are experiencing some health issues and are not able to maintain the property in its entirety. I'm talking about the total of 73 acres area, as well as the kennel, which is on lot number one, and partially extends on to the adjoining area that they own. And for that reason, because they cannot maintain that any longer, they decided that they, or they desire to sell the property, what I'll call the residual, not lot number one and lot number two, but the 73.372 acres that surrounds it or adjoins their lot one and lot two. And on that property, on the 73.372 acres, they have a tenant who's lived there for over 12 years, to whom they desire to sell this property, this residual. And they also have another structure on there, which has been rented to a tenant for approximately six years. So with this background of the two tenants that reside on that residual 73 acres, the one of them, of which wants to buy that residual, and their desire to sell their dog kennel because of their inability to maintain it for health reasons, they approached the city health department and received approval to put two additional, or two septic systems on the residual to service the two houses that are there. And then with regards to Lot 1, you see in the survey plat that there is a 2.80 acre tract just above it that's to be held continuous and contiguous with Lot 1, which is Mary Ann's property. Why are they doing that? They're doing that because the kennel unfortunately extends, not only, or extends over into that area. It's not totally situated on lot number one. So for them to retain the continuity of the kennel on one track, so to speak, they had surveyed off a 2.80 acre tract, which will be continuous and contiguous with their Bateman subdivision property, Lot 1, and the kennel then would all be on, in essence, one track, the 10 acre tract plus the 2.808, which has to remain contiguous and contiguous. And the health department has looked it in and approved the septic system there as well. Then with Lot number two, they desire to have a 4.044 acre tract added to the lot number two, to be continuous and contiguous with Lot number two. And the reason they're doing that is because the septic system for Lot number two is right on the line, if not just a little over, the line of that lot number two. And the Bookers, who owned Lot number two, have a very, very small garage, and they might want to build another garage to be able to house their vehicles. So they would like to have that additional 4.044 acre tract attached to their lot number two. So what we've done, what we've presented to this commission, is the request for the approval for these two splits to occur, to be continuous and contiguous at both lots, to permit those lots then to have that one lot, to have in totality the kennel unit and a septic system as to Lot 1 and Lot 2, to have the septic system and the ability to build a bigger garage. If you subtract that acreage, the 2.808 and the 4.044 acres from the 73.372 acres, then it's a 69.026 acre tract that they desire to transfer and to sell to the Wests, who are the tenants, renting from them for the last 12 years. And there is a purchase contract predicated upon approval here, to have that sale go through. Now, one of the things which was brought to our attention by Mr. Paskey is the fact that the previous ordinance, evidently the previous deliberations involving this matter back in 1998 indicated that if a further split or sale of the property outside of the families are done, the road located on the residual will be brought up to the standards. The residual here was, at that time, the 73.372, and now it's going to be, would be, the 69 acres. And that is a part of his recommendation to the commission at this time. I know that this, it's come looking at from a hardship perspective, which I know is not all that persuasive in many situations. What we're asking, though, the commission is as follows. They've probably got around $50,000 into this matter already. They've put in the two septic systems, had substantial cost, they've had the survey completed, soil analysis completed, and with everything involved, they're a little short, a little over $50,000 in expenditures. There's, quite frankly, financially, as they stand here, it would be a severe hardship for them to bring this road up to a city standards. And I understand, and I'm not minimizing the fact that city standards are important in these matters. What we propose, and again, I understand when Mr. Paskey has brought this before you, is that the commission approves this, and we will provide in the conveyances to the Wests, who are purchasing the property, which would be the 69 acres, we would put a covenant and restriction in that deed, that there be no further development of the property beyond the two single-family residencies that are presently situated there at this time, and that this restriction be binding and run upon the heirs and the assigns and successors in interest, who may subsequently purchase this property or have the property conveyed or inherited. Because it was, I understand Mr. Paskey is concerned that there would be future development out there, that they could be subdivided, the 69 acres, and that there is a road that would be servicing that area that would not meet the standards with potential future development. So we would concur, would agree, that we would put in the conveyances, which we would submit to this, Mr. Paskey for his approval, that there be no future development out there beyond the two current residencies there. And it'd be single-family residencies in both of those structures, not be utilized for rental purposes or third-party purposes, and that that run with the land and be binding upon the heirs. I know I've probably gone over, or I've driven this point home to you more than once, but that is a position we would ask the commission to look at and approve. And I'm available for any question, and so is Mary Ann.
Are there any questions in the commission?
On this ordinance 09798, was there a page two, or was it just the standard boilerplate?
It was just a standard signature page. I got it here, but there was nothing else more to it. It was just the signatures on it.
And at that time, that clause was included about exceptional practical difficulty and undue hardship?
Right.
In that ordinance? Not in the ordinance.
Sure. What is this? Looks like an ordinance to me.
The ordinance...
Right. No, I meant about the stipulation that the road be improved was nothing that counsel...
I understand that. I was just, you had referenced about hardship.
Yeah.
So it was incorporated back then?
It was incorporated in 9798. That's exactly right.
How do you drive there now? I'm looking at the ortho map and...
May I approach? Can I show you that?
Sure.
You can tell me every time.
I know, but...
The lawyer man.
Mr. Judge, you kind of have to...
We're not the judge.
I understand. They, of course, all these individuals here come down through here, Vales and Phillips, and then, and then, now, there is an easement, and I do even have that easement with me, that runs from here down through here.
It looks like...
Yeah.
See this?
Yes. And that is a plat, or it's a...
Well, what is this roadway?
Okay, they, they own this. The Michael's own this. That's the 2.9...
4.4.
4.4 acres, which everybody, everybody has easements across to get to all their properties And then from here, as duly noted there, as you can see, there's this roadway that goes right into here. And see, when this was platted out, you can see that it was platted on their property to go to that line right here, and then the easement went up through here. And we do have that, that's right here.
Over 200 people here come up to that.
Okay.
Right there. That's the easement that we've prepared and recorded with the Adams County Recorder's Office, giving everybody the right to, yeah, back through there. We had that taken care of back in January or December this year.
Okay, and the total acres between 69 is because of those 2.9 acres of roadway. I'm trying to do the math where it says 73, then you subtract almost seven from it, and you end up with 69.
Yeah, I don't think your 73 was right, Bill.
Yeah, it's what's on the plat, but it's shown there, but you're, Paul, it would be the residual at the time, and they show the 73, but whatever that was. And then you subtract from it the 2.808 and the 4.044, and that leaves you with the 69.
Well, what the mayor's saying, 73 minus seven isn't 69.
Yeah.
I'm getting 66 and change, if that ever arises.
We've got the actual survey now, okay? And here, just for your information, I can show you this, right here. I've kept all this together, if you know how I maintain my files. But this is the survey.
What's the residual of this?
Right there. Okay, well, I guess you've got it there, the 69. And we've got the, we've got the survey description for that, right here. Okay.
69 acres, right there. Okay, so it's still, okay, I think the original was what, 96, was it?
Not, by deed, it was 95, and 100 minus five acres. So I think the original, where her father received this, received the property that he conveyed to Mary Ann and her sister, was 95 acres.
I would say that what you have here is accurate, because this is an actual survey. What was done before, and the numbers that Mr. Walker discussed before, if you look in the 98, they received a variance that they didn't have to have this done. So I think everything back then was kind of guesswork. This time, it's a legitimate survey.
Okay, so what they did, okay, so it's, what they did when they took two 10-acre lots out, they said 75, but actually, when you did the survey, it's a little bit different.
Yeah.
Apologize if I wasn't clear on that. Thank you, John.
Are you currently operating under what we, I used to call the private access easement, that roadway now, that's come in, that's shared maintenance between?
That's correct. And there's been no difficulties with that, and everybody's shared in the maintenance and so forth.
This is 1958.
So, let's see. The stipulation would be this has to be developed up to county township road standards? Is that it?
That's what John is recommending to the board. We're asking that that not be a requirement, but that we would, as a requirement, put in there that there be no future development of this property. I understood that concern was that we would develop this and have everybody going back there and their brothers, and we...
So you, the memo that John provided...
I don't want everybody back there anyway.
I'm sorry.
This last sentence under the memo that John provided yesterday to us, you want that stipulation removed?
Yes. We would ask that it be removed, but we will, but you could put a stipulation to that recommendation, that there'll be no development of that residual of the 69 acres, and it would be simply utilized for two...
Single-family homes.
Resident, single-family residency homes.
I think a few other things will be required than going through the plan, or taking it to City Council. Another variance will be required then, that there be an access easement to the residual property, since the 2.944 acres is technically in the ownership of you. So you would have to provide an access easement to the residual property off of this right away, that we, that would be another requirement, that we would add another variance that would have to be added to what was already granted once before.
I have some concerns about tying the hands of future owners of the property as well.
Yes, I agree.
Do you, can you actually...
I mean, they would be, anybody purchasing it would be aware. They would, you wouldn't be tying hands, because they would be aware of it before they bought.
I understand. At this moment, they would be aware, but like, in future years, things get, you know, people, things get kind of pushed to the background, and it may not be in the forefront of people's minds. They may come in and think, you know, here's this 69 acres of land that could be developed into a residential subdivision.
All I can speak to...
Basically, they, you know, could get far enough into the process that they've invested money into due diligence and research, and then come to the understanding that it can't be.
My response to that would be, due diligence, I understand your concern, but due diligence, this is up record at the Recorder's Office. It can be even, it can even be marginally noted on the plat that this restriction exists. And so the plats are permanent records over there. Anyone buying, buying either one of these lots would see the plat, and the deed would also reflect it as well. And these are all permanent records over there, and anyone that is buying a piece of property, particularly for development, listen, I know mistakes are made. I know what you're saying. But as they run an examination of the property, determine, you know, what are restrictions? Because we all have restrictions on, you know, subdivisions and so forth. But anyway, that, I guess would just, to answer you, it would be a permanent record at the Recorder's Office. And anyone buying the property would be aware of it. If they did, their due diligence, yes.
So if I understand, the residual actually has two structures on it already, two residences. Can you actually point out the location, approximately where they are here?
Here.
Just I, I have to assume they're off the easement somewhere.
On the survey, they'd be approximately where it says 50-foot wide, private.
So they're both on the same side?
I believe they are, yes.
Can you strike the X where they are? I guess I'll, looking down the road, saying, okay, right now, you've got four people using that.
If you look at the aerial that I provided here...
It's not colored, that's why.
Yeah.
Oh, it's not color?
Yeah, it's all, it's been stealth, stealthy mode now. Over there, so you've got two houses, structures there.
What I, if I could, Mayor, I did hear...
One there and one up here.
Okay.
I did hear the property owner indicate that because of the business, it's averaging more like, didn't you say up to 600 vehicles?
300.
300 vehicles?
Yeah, so I mean, it's well-maintained, it's a well-maintained road, you know, townships use them, I said. It is a well-maintained road. You know, we've got customers coming in and out, we've kind of took care of it, you know, and when my dad bought this property, we run into three of them. So, you know, that...
Were those houses there?
That happened after divorce and divorce, I'm sorry.
When were the houses built there? The two structures that are in that rough triangle, pentagon, no, parallelogram, whatever the heck it is?
One or this?
Two, the two that are now...
May I interrupt the commission, and I apologize for this, but I know we didn't have her sworn in. Is that all right with you? I just...
I do appreciate your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We're good.
So can you tell me approximately when those two homes were, or houses were built in that area?
The two other ones, not my house...
Yes, and not your sister's.
The one was put back there in like 1958, when 1960, when my dad built it, he moved it there. And the other, so it's like the old farmhouse type, but it's not, it's not an old farmhouse that it's, that's what we call it. And then the other one is a new home that we built eight years ago, seven years ago? Brand-new home.
It is brand-new?
And actually, the owners, the people that are buying it, helped me pick out everything for that home. They're like family. They're like our adopted kids. We don't have any children. They're like our adopted kids. And it was going to be willed to them anyway, so it's just doing this, you know, ahead of time, because I physically can't do the stuff, I can't pay to have somebody do the stuff. And I don't get a lot of help with a lot of the outside work, and I'm kind of a fanatic, kind of a fanatic about what it looks like with the business and, you know.
Could you imagine that, I know you asked the question, it was the same one I had, but can you imagine, looking at this map, if you look at it, to say around it are all kinds of smaller lots built into subdivisions? This looks like a premier location, it's up on the top of the hill, I assume, right?
Yes.
Okay, so is this, if we would agree to this change, would we be allowing you to do, for short term, and I know it's important, because it's your health and everything else, but you look at it and say, gee, with a little bit of additional thought and work, maybe it could be, you know, worth much, much more than it is, as it's currently developed, even with the new house? I, you know, I, I know it's...
I know, you know, that's my thought, is, you know, if, if we would wait and develop it sometime in the future, when the city probably will grow that way and whatever, you know, I'm sure we could get more money out of it, but then we're asking them now, because they're friends of ours, you know what I'm saying? And we're not asking the amount that it's actually worth now, as it is, and not being able to, and it was, and it was appraised with the fact that it was not able to be subdivided, you know.
To answer my point would be, and a good question, but she's going to sell it now, so it's not...
Right, I know.
She doesn't, it's not like she can...
I can't.
Change it, you know, where she could get more money in the future.
But could someone come in in the future and say, well, 20 years ago, they did that, but right now, we need to do this?
Understand that.
Okay. And you also own this other piece that goes out to the east-west, whatever it is? This one right here, right?
Whitlin Woods.
Is it? No, 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 I mean, isn't there?
Yeah, they own the piece that attaches this to Whitlin Woods, right?
Oh, okay.
This piece, they own this piece, right here. Okay, this piece right here.
That's the one I was talking about, yes.
Yeah, they own that. That is with this. Not with any of that, that piece, so... Not just any of that, that piece itself.
Okay. So is, um, is it the case that, um, the Sugar Bush thing has an agenda that's not development?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I mean, I just wonder what it, is this, this used to be a farm, now it's named Sugar Bush, L.C. The area is south of you, around you, surrounding you, all the way around?
The next door neighbor actually is Florinoy, Don M.
It was Florinoy and now it's Sugar Bush.
Still, I, it's.
Well, I know that, but I want, you know, what is the deal? Is there a future development plan for that?
I doubt it. Most of them are still alive.
Yet to me, it sounds more like conservation of land.
Because you're now going to cut any trees down.
But you see, I mean, we all have a stand and then somebody else comes along and they say, say trees is in the way.
Right, right, oh yeah.
I mean, I.
He doesn't even want trees removed that are falling onto the ground, so.
So, John, back to your recommendation, if that line is removed, what, what would be in place separately from that?
Well, and, and I, I understand the hardship here, but, and I, the, the problem I have with Bill's recommendation is we don't issue use permits in the county. And you can build multiple houses on one property in the county. So if somebody, if we were to grant this, but yet they come in here and want to build four, five, six, seven houses, how do we stop it? How, how does anybody stop it? How do I know that that's being built? We wouldn't know.
I, the only, the only assurance I give you is like we do on, on many transactions, is that it's in the deed that that cannot be further developed. And we, uh, we do that with easements all the time. We put easements of record that, and we could put an, with regards to that easement you were talking about, we could also stipulate that that easement is not to be utilized other than for the existing.
Total of four residences.
Yeah, and it'd be used strictly for that, that easement. So you've got it at the guard in the easement, you've got the guard in the deed, you've got the guard on the plat. So you've got it in, in three different locations, all filed of record at the courthouse.
This would eventually be under the ownership of the one couple?
One couple.
One couple.
Okay.
They've been, they've been doing inches like that and, and I'm not charging him enough rent, this and this, to even pay the taxes and everything on it, um, you know, just because he helps me. He's, he's the only one that, I mean, he does, gets out, does all this done removal and, you know. To them, it's already their property, is what I'm saying, maybe.
Would there be, would there be anything in this that could allow that couple to eventually turn into a subdivision?
No, because when they buy it, when, when the property's transferred from the Michaels to them, it would be in their deed and they would be aware of it. And it's in their deed that they cannot do that. And so if they go for future development, it's in their deed, it's on the plat, it's on the easement, that if they were going to develop it and then someone was going to buy it, they would see that they can't be doing it.
Or they'd come back before the board.
Or they'd come back before the board.
Right.
Well, is, is there any way to like work out something as part of the agreement that they would contribute to the, to the improvements of the road?
That, that's easy.
Yeah.
We can put a maintenance agreement, that would be part of the plan. We've done that before.
Yeah.
That would be one of the requirements also, and I'm writing that down right now, that, that the stipulations would be that an access easement variance be granted by city council, a maintenance agreement be drawn up, and that no future development other than the four primary residences that are on the parcels, there are three parcels now, be all the, all that can ever be built there.
Because I mean, I understand that you are.
We have buildings too there.
Primary residences.
Okay.
Two houses, your two houses and the two, I'm not worried about outbuildings or the business, but, well, yeah, I guess we should say, or future business as well. We can't add another business back in there either. So is this saying that even if the road is brought up to standards, that it can, that it can't be developed?
That's what we're saying, without coming back to you.
I say that's probably correct, because if the road is developed and improved, then yeah, they'd have to come back here to get that variance removed, so.
I mean, we're asking a substitution, so I mean, yes, we're taking, we're asking you to remove one and put this in, so I, we couldn't, uh, it could not be brought up without coming back.
Now, keep in mind, the road coming to this property is probably not any better than the road in itself going back to it. And I just went to the planning commission meeting, uh, the planning, or the county commissioners meeting. They're, they're working with the county commissioners on trying to get the county or township to accept the road and maintain it. And I don't know how that's going to go. It didn't sound favorable, but, uh.
The first half's.
The first half is already in a right of way that probably should have been maintained. And Mike just walked out. He could probably answer more, but, um, on, on this. So it's, this whole thing's kind of tricky. It really, it really is. The, the access even getting back to their parcel is not an approved road as well.
Would we, would we really want to tie the, the business hand? Because the business could change. I mean, I know that you're operating it now, but, I mean.
That's a few.
There's a vibrant kennel out there, so, but I guess I'm asking.
Been in business for twenty years.
When you talk about those restrictions, that's why I'm asking that, John. It says existing business or?
But it would be enforced in the court.
Yeah, but yeah, it could be another business come in that would be more intrusive, I guess, than, than a kennel someday, you know, that wouldn't, the road would. So maybe, maybe it has to say that the, the, the provision be that only the four primary residences and the one is kennel.
I was trying to do that. I think you're going the opposite way of what I was concerned about.
I know, I know what you're saying.
It may be a vibrant kennel today and it might become raising baby goats later or.
What I'm getting at is that no further businesses could be built or, uh, the current business couldn't be tore down and another more, a bigger business be built there, whatever it may be. Just, in other words, so that the load that's on the road now doesn't increase what it already is.
Well, there's, let's say we put a carry out there or something like that, and all of a sudden you have more traffic. Sorry, I'm just trying to think of, you know, a drive-through. That, that would be good for drive-through, for hamburger joint, but, um, you know, all of a sudden you've got intensification of use. Remind me when we, the subdivision regulations cut in, is that four lots or five?
Five and greater would require, yes, but.
That's assuming a public road.
That's assuming it's on a public road. This was not. So is, this is still considered a major subdivision because it does not have public road frontage?
And you're saying everything, uh, going up to Huddle Road, is it, or Fifty-Six? I forget which one it is. Huddle, everything up there is, is, is private till you get to this lot. So you have at least two portions that are private.
Well, if.
This one's a decent.
It comes straight down. I don't know if it's, if it's a private road or if it's, it's actually platted, but I don't know who, what ownership it's in. It's not very wide. And then the road, as you can see, heads eastward out of that area and meanders through, meanders through some other parcels and, I, but, you know, that's not really part of this.
I'm, I'm just trying to figure out the, okay, the other side of, I'm looking at four different households here that, that can't, you know, spend the money on a road.
Right now, the road comes right off the corner here, here's Huddle.
Okay, this would be this one right here.
Right here, yes, and then the road comes down. And it does not come straight into this property. You can see how it meanders from here over this way.
Yeah.
So it actually comes down and then kind of cuts through here and over like this. So it actually goes through three different parcels as well too, because these are, they're continuous with each other. But it actually comes off of this twenty-foot right of way and then meanders over through this parcel and this parcel to there. Now, what they were asking the township to do is to accept it all the way back. The township said they probably should have been maintaining it from here to here anyways. And, um, but they in all likelihood cannot accept the remaining part of it because of subdivision requirements, concept requirements, distance of houses from each other.
Too far.
Yeah, so. Um, so this road from here to here is probably in no better shape than it's already there.
But then. That's owned by somebody else. So it's probably an easement or do you?
Well, that's the part I don't know.
He's got the.
This part here, this is owned by, uh, these people right here. And, and we have an easement from them and them to go from here to there. That's that easement I just brought up there.
Yeah, but this is a private road right here. This is not.
It doesn't go all the way through. It stops about right here and then cuts like this.
Okay, even though it's platted straight through?
Even though it's platted straight through, it doesn't do that.
So the, okay, so really the, the maintenance of all these pieces are determined by the, the adjacent property owners are by agreement?
That's correct.
Do they have any type of say, for instance, uh, when you talk about the possibility of expansion?
No. This is actually.
Given that it's on their property, the roadway?
No, because this is actually owned by the Michaels. Michaels gave a right just to use this, but no, they would have no right to say, yes, we, you know, go ahead and expand that and use this. No, they, they would have no say in the ability to.
Well, I was thinking more the other way around, that they, that they would be more in position to say, we absolutely don't want any type of development.
Yes, they could, because.
So that if people came, you know, to, to go to the, one of the earlier questions, twenty, thirty years from now, somebody comes in and wants to do something.
I didn't mean to turn your back on you, but actually if, under the, and I just got a look here, there we go. Right here, in the easement that I already prepared for that, that section from here to there, we have it in there. Considerate to grant, if you come and agree, that said broad easement right of way shall be used only for single-family residential purposes. So that, it's in there. They can't, they can enforce that. They cannot expand it.
But it's not all writ that way, Bill.
Huh?
There's a commercial business back there.
No, 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 yeah. But I'm talking about the, the people that have signed this can't use their, their properties for other than residential. Not her.
Got you.
This is already God. They cannot, okay?
And that would be enforced in the court, right?
Yes.
But not, because there's no enforcer that's, as of this, I'm not saying that as a, a negative, but you don't have anyone inspecting it on a daily basis.
That's right. It's enforced, it, it would have to be enforced through the property dealers out there, through the legal system.
Okay.
So are we here today, once again, to, um, recommend approval because it would have to go to, back to city council?
It definitely would have to the city council, yes.
Could, one more question, then I promise them, I won't promise them. Where's the, um, where's the Leacs line? Does it go along the, the road? You have Leacs water or do you have?
Yeah, we have Leacs water. Water tap us at the end of our driveway.
And it goes along the driveway?
Main tower is at the end of our driveway and comes back through. It actually comes back through Kent Phillips's property. My dad and him did a switch and he gave him the right of way and he gave him a way through with the water, a cheaper way through the water, good old handshake way it used to be.
Where is it?
So you didn't have to.
Oh, that's.
So there's not any other hidden little problems in this?
No, and, and all my, um, neighbors know that we're doing this.
Well, that's good.
And they, you know, they're, we're on a very good basis and they all know we're doing this. They also all signed the thing about the township road. And some of them went to the meeting on that also. So they're familiar with this and they are familiar with like health conditions and they know their deaths and all the, and all the stuff, huh?
John, could you read back the language that should be, would be incorporated?
Yes, I got it figured out here. The way this could be proposed, that the plat of the Bateman subdivision owned by Mary Ann Michael and Shelley Bateman Butcher, is that how it's said?
Booker.
Booker, situated in section thirty-two, town nine, farm lot one sixty-two, range fourteen, Athens Township, Athens County, Ohio, consisting of twenty-two point nine four four acres, divided into streets and lots number one and two, be amended from ordinance zero dash nine seven dash nine eight to now consist of twenty-nine point seven nine six acres divided into a twelve point eight zero eight acre lot one, formerly ten acres, and a fourteen point zero four four acre lot two, formerly ten acres, and a two point nine four four acres for a fifty-foot wide private roadway. And that the stipulation that an access easement variance be granted by city council, a maintenance agreement be drawn up between the property owners, and that no development, subdivision, or new home construction should occur on the sixty-nine point zero two six acre residual property.
Does that mean they could even put a garage on?
No homes. No, they can do garages. Yeah.
I move. Recommend all that.
Again, I'm a little bit worried what would occur in the next, uh, ten or fifteen years here and make sure, you know, I, the improvement of the road, I think, would be a basis to, to, to follow that and leave that in the mix, but, um, I don't know. Do you need a second? Is there a second? I'll do a second, just so we can vote on it. I would point out too, though, that again, they do have to come back if they wanted to make any type of change, alteration. Do you want to do that second thing or? No. Take you off the hook? No. No, I, I understand that. There, there are stopgaps on it. Again, tracking it and it's, this will change. The question is, what are we setting up for the change? The fact is, is, you know, we could require the improvement of the road just to the end of the property line, but everything to.
What's the point?
Huddle Road is, is not improved. And I don't know the cost of what it would take to, to bring this up to township level or whatever it would take to actually get it to the level where you'd say, you know, here, here township, it's, it's done, you know, it's all finished, it's ready to go and it's paved or gravelled or whatever. I don't know the cost of that. I'm looking at the fact that you have actually four households here that should be, would actually, in the back of my mind, be able to actually put the dollars together to do that, but they, they don't have. Well, yeah, but, you know, this is, this is the case, that, that, you know, you're trying, you're, you're bouncing along at the bottom here, and so this means this will change somehow financially. And we're trying to put restrictions in.
Before I started this, I spoke with, um, Mr. Vasquez and my son, and kind of pointed this all out and talked to him and whatever. And I would not have went ahead and spent fifty thousand dollars if I wasn't under the impression that this was going to go through. And when he said these were not considered splits, so I, you know, these were, you know, wouldn't be considered traditional splits on those. And, you know, and we talked for, and he gave me some good advice.
A lot more has come to the forefront since we talked though.
Gave me some good advice on maintenance agreements, um, you know, and things like that. But I wouldn't have put fifty thousand dollars into doing this because if I can't sell it now, you might as well just take it.
I, I guess I'm looking at, uh, the other way to, to, to cut this pie.
Somebody else can pay the taxes on it.
Well, again, you've got, you know, you've got two, not so much rentals, but two places that are actually occupied right now. Uh, you've got your own home, you've got your sister's home.
I'm on permanent, I'm on disavowing now, so I get.
What I, what I'm looking, um, you know, what I'm looking at, of course, is that, how to explain it? The stipulation, the way I understand it as it stands now, is if this property was to be sold to other, another person, non-family, you would be required to build a road. And that's the, that's the hurdle we're trying to negotiate right here, okay? You know, the other way to do this is say, okay, we give you a pass on this particular, you know, split, but if it doesn't again, you have to build a road. I don't see.
Would the commission, and would, would you be willing to accept if the roadway language remained in there? I mean, I think that maybe were some.
Okay, yeah, I understand what you're saying. If we could keep that roadway language in there, that's for the next time. Is that what you're saying?
Well, that's the question. Are you talking about, you know, the limitation right now would be no more housing construction, no more how, how, you know, build outs, which is a concern. The other one is that when it goes out of, outside the family and you consider them family, you know, we, we, we leave the language in there and just say, we've now made an extended family of these, these households. I, I'm not, I'm not really in a position to negotiate. I'm just looking at how the lang, which language becomes less convoluted over in the future.
And would you? I would almost recommend that it comes, you know, that any, I don't know, removing the term family and future development.
Well, that's what you are really building right now, right? So it would have to still come back. The stipulation of improving the road has been dropped out, but the fact that the next hurdle.
If anybody wanted to build anything, it would have to come back.
Well, and technically we. Well, and technically, we're still talking about three lots here, you know?
Right.
So you have actually the possibility, in subdivision land, two more lots before it comes to-
That would be a requirement, definitely.
That's when the actual cutout happens, yes. And I'm not trying to change the fix here, we have a motion and a second here, I'm just trying to think of how, you know, one concept moves forward in time, and this and the present motion moves forward in time.
And I'm willing to modify it if I hear today that if we re-insert the roadway language that was, has been on the actual reported plat.
Is that a-
Yeah, okay, with, with the, with the motion that's existing now, adding to that, I just want to make sure I understand this, that the language that is there now continues, is that what you're saying?
It needs to be recorded, then, because I do not believe it is right now.
That is not, I, well, it's not recorded.
It is on the plat.
It's not recorded.
This plat is not recorded?
No, no.
No, the language, the language that he's saying, outside the family.
Yeah. Yeah, actually, it is recorded.
As I was saying.
Okay.
It is on the plat.
What does it say?
It says that, right here, the Athens County Commission will only accept a dedicated public road after it's been built, all the effective time, no, it does not have that language now. It does not have the language that-
It says, if further splits are made or properties are sold outside of the family, the road must be brought up to standards of the City of Athens, and the Athens County engineer and the Athens County commissioners will only accept-
At the city standard.
It is on there.
Yeah, it is.
Do you have any of those?
I did not.
Oh.
I don't know if he does.
Yeah, he just brought this over. Want to drive it?
We'll include it in the packet, definitely.
I've got extra.
Thank you, Bill.
And again, I, you know, it's almost like, you know, the belt and suspend approach as best we can, from my point of view, but-
If this were Athens County Commission decision, planning commission, would they be talking about different things?
Yes. They would, I don't think they'd be looking at the finances whatsoever, or the hardships.
Uh-huh, well, I was thinking also, just the road and everything else, you know, the concept of the road building, I guess that I sometimes feel like I'm out in the weeds when I'm a city person, doing township or county.
You want me to second guess the planning commission?
Well, we're sort of second guessing.
Get them from the planning, regional planning.
Regional planning, yeah, which I'm on, but, you know, we would have it brought to us.
Yes.
And frankly, those ordinance from '98 indeed addressed hardship. I mean, that's, that's beyond us, I guess that's up to city council.
Could we, I guess I don't want to get into that finance part, but I'd like to explore, if she's got, if she has easements, if the owners have an easement, developing, I mean, how much would it cost to do a road on top of what's there? I mean, it's not going to be that costly, is it? I mean, I'm not saying that we should-
It's a half-mile driveway.
That's about $60,000.
I mean, she's got 50 in it, right? So she's got the pathways to cure-
Yeah, I might as well not sell it, I won't make any money at all.
Paul brought up a perfect example of a location, a little bit different, of a non-improved road going to, or not, a non-city approved road going to a city approved road would be Oakmont subdivision. When you get into that, it's curb, gutter, storm, water, sewer, et cetera, that would be the requirement. So, and they can't use this term a million dollar a mile, so if it's a half-mile, you do the math.
Well, we wouldn't do the utilities at all, but I'm just trying to figure out exactly how much money we're talking about at this point.
I don't have, yeah.
I kind of, I kind of lean toward doing it because it's out there, and probably, you know, it's, I'm sitting next to Paula, that must be a lot, but I want, but I do have concerns, as you've heard, I mean, I don't think it's an easy leaning, I feel rather, I feel stressed and tense by it.
No, I just, I can't speak for, so I mean, but it would be prohibitive, I believe, I really do.
I would say, I need more amenable if what John just read, he reinserted about the roads at the end of that.
Yeah.
John, would you be amenable to that?
The stipulation that I had before, plus the other stuff?
Well, again, the family part-
I don't think you need to do both.
As far as the family part, and the road, as far as the-
Again, this is not family.
Yeah, I think the family language almost has to come out.
Couldn't you just say that the language previously recited will remain?
Well, but I think the family-
Yeah.
My concern with that is, let's be realistic, and I hate to say this, but someday, one of them's not going to be here, and when you have someone pass away and it goes into new ownership, how do we make that person develop the road? That's-
Why would we, unless they're changing something, if this is existing?
Because it would no longer be staying in the family.
I understand, that's why I'm saying, I think the family language almost has to be removed, and it's just future development.
And then you make it the way I said before, where we grant a variance, because now that it's not a family, and it's not all in the same ownership, we have to have the access easement, and we have to have a maintenance agreement, and, and that we'll make the provision that no, just the way I read it, no new construction can occur, or slot splits, development, et cetera, on the residual property. And, and we ought to say "and" on the other two, because the other two lots are large enough to be, large enough to be split in half as well.
So how can you do that, John, because you have two different structures that are in this larger plot, and if one goes into ownership, either they're going to have two houses, or else-
I don't know how in the world you have two houses, or both homes in the same ownership, but the person that's wanting to buy this is going to be owning the other house as well.
They're going to own both those.
They're going to own both those houses, and then they can only rent the other one out, they can never sell it, because if they were to sell it, it'd have to be a split.
I mean, you know, and that's futuristic.
Right.
Because I, I see it.
But I think as far-
I won't be here.
As far as with the family, the term "family," couldn't, they adopt a family, and-
Yeah.
As long as no new development occurs. My only concern is, and I've said it before, if I wanted to, I can go back there, if I own, if I was the person she was selling that to, and I wanted to build 20 more houses back there and rent every single one of them out, I would have no way to stop that, even with the language that I just put on here. I mean, technically, it'd be illegal, but how am I going to catch it?
Without public sewer, you know, and, I mean, there are some other checks and balances here in the county.
But it's already done by then, it's already done then, and, and, you know, the health department can grant permits for septic systems if there's adequate enough room, they wouldn't know, the health department have no way of knowing this stipulation exists, so I could easily, if I owned that property, come in here and say, I'm going to build three, four, five, six more houses, rent them out, have septic systems, all in the same parcel, and it would, it would be against what we just said, but I wouldn't catch it.
But even with a road, they could do that.
Well, yeah, I think also the neighbors would be complaining about that.
I understand all this.
I will admit, we did not cover every eventuality, yeah, I just, I'm going to admit that, but-
Development, defined development, then, no new development.
Potential structure, I think, is what you're talking about.
I said, the private owner, and that no development, subdivision, or new home construction-
Okay.
-should occur on the 69.026 acre residual property.
And is that, that would prohibit the scenario that was so luscious that you just gave us, right?
Correct, it prohibits it, but it doesn't stop it.
Oh.
It's not something that John can please.
Because somebody, they don't have to come to me to get a permit to do it.
Can you write it on the deed?
It's on, it's on the deed.
It would be on the deed, it would be on there, but-
On the plat, along with the road requirement?
I don't think the plat's-
It could be, it can be on there.
Oh, this is probably not the right thing.
That's not the issue.
This is a subdivision, no one would look at it.
That's not the issue, and it could be on there, I mean, I'm sure there's probably stuff on deeds throughout, all over in the county, but when you don't have a building department, you don't have a zoning department, you don't have anything like that in the county, there's no permits that are being pulled, so no one's going to pull the deed, so people will start building, or could start building, without, yeah, they'd be going against what's recorded, but there's no way to police it.
And this is what Nancy was saying, it has to go through a court system, somebody has to find, be agreed by, then they'd have to do their own-
I mean, I think a bank would have a difficult time doing a loan, because they're going to do a deed search, a title search, and they would say, hey, you can't do this, but if somebody were to hit the lottery, you know, and build enough houses, they could do so, I mean, the chances are very slim, I grant it, but the chance is there.
Okay.
And I heard Attorney Walker state, you know, we can't, how do you account for any-
We can't.
Yes, contingency that may come in or whatever.
Okay.
So I think we're back to my motion, based on your language.
The way I read it before.
And my second.
And, and we would clarify that somebody who lived in one of those two houses could have a home business, like the tenant, right?
No.
Or could be a developer, could move his cars, and maybe some of his stuff there.
Well, that, that's fine, but that's-
All right, I just want to make sure that that's understood.
It's a home business, it's not a new, yeah, I mean, if he had to build a big pole yard, and he owned a construction company and run, kept his equipment there, I don't have a problem with that, because that's not a residence, that's not increasing the, you know, that type of business is not something where you have multiple-
More demand on the road.
More people coming, more demand, there you go, on the road.
The ice skating rink, the carryout, the restaurant, I guess.
Well, that would be no development, I said no development.
Yes, that's what I mean, that's where, that's your concern, is that, you know, it's okay if somebody, let's say, they do a home business, that they're in the backyard or something, but when does it-
Not a good location for doing this.
You never know, some people have, what's a perfect location of these things?
Scenic, right?
What?
I said, it's probably scenic.
It has to go through city council, that would be, and I think Bill and I can work out the language a little bit more from here, to kind of dot the i's across the t's, if that's all right with you.
That's fine, no, sure, I will with you.
To do it, put everything in there the best we can.
Do we need Mr. Paskey to reread one more time? I'd like to hear, I'd like to hear, so it's clear in my mind, go ahead.
Are you ready?
Yes.
So the ordinance proposal, or, it's not an ordinance, our request here, would be that the plat of the Bateman subdivision, owned by Mary Ann Michael and Shelley Bateman Booker, situated in section 32, town nine, farm lot 162, range 14, Athens Township, Athens County, Ohio, consisting of 22.944 acres, divided into streets and lots number, lots numbers one and two, be amended from ordinance 0-97-98 to now consist of 29.796 acres, divided into a 12.808 acre lot number one, formerly 10 acres, and a 14.044 lot acre number, lot number two, formerly 10 acres, and a 2.944 acres for a 50-foot wide private roadway, and that the stipulation that an access easement variance be granted by city council, a maintenance agreement be drawn up between the property owners, and that no development, subdivision, or new home construction should occur on the 69.026 acre resident, or residual property.
I move again to recommend that to city council.
And I'll second that, with the observation, it's almost like a conservation easement, because it's really going to limit what you can do there, isn't it?
Till the road's brought up to standard?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And technically, a conservation easement, we do sit down.
It is concluded, we want to develop.
Okay, it's been seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Yeah.
Okay, we have four in favor, one opposed.
One in favor.
Thank you, Mr. Paskey, thank you, Mr. Walker, appreciate it.
Appreciate it, thank you very much.
Going to communications? Nothing in communications?
What I, let's see, probably I'd like to bring up, I gave you guys a paper, Journal of American Planning Association, zoning for sustainability, it should be on your back end right there, this was sent to me unsolicited, it's a survey, so to speak, of zoning codes for 32 different cities, looking at how sustainable they are, I think, as I said, the author of contact is basically sent to me, states himself that it is more like, not construed as fully, you know, covering everything, but more like, just more like a survey of zoning laws within various cities, 32 different cities, that have, basically, participating cool cities, Italy, as well as have online ordinances. The reason why I mention, I bring this to your attention, because if you look at table number one, which I find interesting, is what they consider important aspects for sustainability and green development, and it gives, I bring it to your attention, I, Paul mentioned it in the plan, first, it gives us some idea of attraction of what we'd like to see maybe happen, or what we should be thinking of. If you actually look at our, I think, table two says we rate, second from the bottom in terms of sustainability ordinances, this one right here, we're down here, just above New London, Connecticut, and the scoring, I think the top score of this is 93, nobody's scored over 33, we're down at six. I, I'm cognizant of the fact that many of the activities we do in the city don't end up in the code, or the ordinance level, that end up on MUNI code, so you can look it up, because really what they did is they, they searched the net, and they, you know, they got the baseline from the Italy Cool Cities process, and then they found the ones that they could actually do a perusal on the internet of the code ordinances, and then I said, how green is it according to table one criterias? Correct me if I'm wrong on any of this, Paul, but, because I think-
I think you're correct.
Yeah, I did get a follow-up, the gentleman, the Dr. Jepson, I think it is, and Al Hayes, Dr. Jepson said, do you want more information? And I said, yes, he gave us the table of the last three pages, which is basically the checklist of where we scored, as well as the websites involved in all, in all the different cities, but giving us a little bit of, if we want to delve deeper, we have the ability to do that as well. And I just mentioned, because we've been trying, talk about trying to prove the code, make the code, there's actually a section, table four, it does review, where it actually has some narrative, I haven't had time to study this enough, I know it's limited in what it can tell us, but the fact is, it gives us a little bit of ideas of what we want to see, and some of the stuff we talk about doing, you know, whether it's creating a sense of place, essence of Athens, encouraging higher density development, you know, what, you know, some of the ones I don't understand, if I look at table one, first bullet, third bullet down to number three, purchase and transfer development rights, I don't even know what that means exactly, except maybe conservation easements, you know, parking maximums, I know, I've discussed with the planner, so I just look at this as a, you know, a paper that will stimulate thoughts and discussions, and that's all, that's all I'll bring up is communications, so you have it for evening reading.
Thank you.
Thanks, thank you.
Anyone else under communications? Reports from the city planner, Mr. Loeb?
Just a few things, one is that the Monday evening that just passed, the Historic Preservation Commission had a meeting, the primary discussion on their agenda was the President's Street Academic Center on Ohio University's campus, which the university is considering demolishing, the Preservation Commission expressed some concerns about that, it is a nationally-registered building, it's part of the educational, or the Ohio University Historic District, it's about 103 years old, it's been sitting there empty for about a decade or 12 years, so that was part of the discussion, with some significant concerns about that demolition, or potential demolition. Last night, we had a meeting with the Municipal Arts Commission, they're working on aspects of implementation for the Essence of Athens Plan, we had a good discussion about, if you recall on that plan, there's recommendations to work on, like those, the traffic boxes that are scattered throughout the city, that, how you regulate the streetlights, and how they're just these gray boxes sitting around the community, and that they can get to be an eyesore, and so ways to address those and bring in some public art into our community. Lastly, we have, on Wednesday evening, January 21st, at 6:00 PM, there's a public meeting at the Athens Community Center with respect to a new swimming pool, and so we've got the consultants from Branson to Carroll will be present, it is an open house for any members of the community to attend and get their input or information and their thoughts on a new swimming pool, or new aquatic center, so if you have time, please come.
I was aware of the traffic box study that Mr. Leftholz did, it was very meticulous.
It was.
He's put a lot of effort into it.
Yeah.
The next question is whether we can afford to move forward with that.
There, there'll be a little bit more coming, after last night's meeting, they have, the Arts Commission has been working really hard in the last several meetings, I think, and they're doing some great work right now, as has the Historic Preservation Commission.
And I was under the impression that Ohio University would reach out to the Historic Preservation Committee, they have- Preservation Committee. They have members on it right now, right?
Yeah, they were, the university was present at the meeting.
They presented their rationale.
Yes, they gave some discussion on it, yeah, right. And it's, my, my rough take is that the, the building isn't suitable for the needs that the university's looking for, for an expansion of the College of Business.
And in theory, my memory zoning wise, that's an R-three, so they'll have to probably look at the regs and how, they'll have to write a nice letter to the planning commission saying how that they can't follow.
I believe it's an R-three zone, correct, right?
Anything else, Mr. Loeb?
No.
Okay, Mr. Paskey?
The only thing I have to say, tomorrow morning, I'm meeting with Art O'Stry and his architect in regards to the taproom on Stimson Avenue. You may remember that he came in this past summer, did some preliminary stuff, and he just wanted me to remind everyone and that we're going to, he's going to start moving forward on it, and you should be seeing that soon, maybe. Might not even be a Title Forty-One, I don't know. I'll know more when I see it tomorrow, but I'll keep you up to date on it.
Okay, and in terms of the Union Street Fire Situation?
We have a meeting at noon Tuesday afternoon, January twentieth, with the property owners, building, business owners, and Historic Preservation, who else?
Yeah, actually, I apologize, I forgot to mention that. Representatives from the U.S. Department of the Agriculture, Ohio Rural Development Office, and the Ohio Department of Development or Ohio Development Services, I forget what they're called.
Development Service Agency.
The Ohio Historic Tax Credit Program, they'll be presenting. They were supposed to be here a week and a half ago on January sixth, but the.
Mother Nature.
Yeah, Athens was under a level-two snow emergency, so we requested that people not trek down from Columbus that morning.
The only thing I'd ask you to do if possible is extend a invite to Sarah Morris Maxfield, the Economic Development Council.
For Tuesday?
Yeah, for this meeting. Basically, there, you know, that's, in terms of jobs and retention and expansion, that's one of her, you know, her responsibilities. There also are the gatekeepers, the preliminary gatekeepers for our revolving loan funds, both the county and the city level. So if there's, you know, if we're looking for resources, maybe we'll pull that in as well.